I declare this meeting open for Denbort City Council on the eighteenth of three at five thirty. Denbort City Council acknowledges and pays respects to the Palawa Pakena people as the traditional and original owners of Lutuwea region and continue in the staudings of this land, although which we gather. All persons, sorry, we also acknowledge and pay our respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginals past and present. All persons in attendance are advised that it is council policy to record council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. The meeting will also be livestreamed on council's YouTube channel. So we get two apologies, we have none. We have four counts, which is great, thank you very much. Sorry, oh, Councilwoman Chisby, sorry, I missed that. Oh, that's right, she has let us know that she's intending to be here, just travelling, so I've been held up. Any declarations of interest, please, before the open council meeting?
Yes, ma'am, you do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Murphy.
In agenda item four point one, I might do these out of order, ma'am.
That's fine.
Four point one, four point three and four point four, I would declare an interest. I am engaged in the real estate industry, I am known to a number of those proponents, and therefore I will be leaving the room, as I have been engaged in.
For all three?
For those three, yes. For agenda item four point two, I would declare an interest. I will be staying in the room. That interest, I am known to the developer, but I have had no previous business dealings with them.
Thank you. Any other declarations of interest?
Thank you, ma'am, I declare an interest in item three point two point two, as a resident of Tugger Road. And I'll be staying in the room, thank you.
Thank you. How much should it?
Thank you, ma'am. Item four point three, just consider the scale of that Strata development, and because I have a Strata management division within my company, I want to excuse myself from the room. And item five point four, I have been and will continue there to sponsor Paper Onski. I'll be leaving the room then as well.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello.
I've declared declaration of interest for item four point three. I'm a correct relative to one of the representations of that development, so I'll be leaving the room, no sense of thanks, thank you.
I'm sure we've got a quorum. Any other further declarations of interest?
Five point six, me, knowing my brothers are on board at Denbort Football Club, one of the U, one of the huge spirits regarding that.
Thank you. Any further declarations? Thank you. Please be with me as I allow people to come in and out of the rooms for the different items. Thank you. So, item three procedural, three point minus the confirmation of minutes, if I could have a move of the regulation, please.
So.
Thank you, Councilwoman Murphy.
Seconded.
And Councilwoman Vining. Councilwoman Murphy.
Be in the procedure, ma'am.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vining.
Nothing to add, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, any further comment? No, Councilwoman Murphy.
Consider closed.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Against, Karen Inansley, thank you, three point two. Public question time, so we're moving into three point two point one is responses to questions raised.
So, ma'am.
Thank you.
Seconded.
Councilwoman Murphy, thank you. Council Martin?
Thank you, I think Council has responded to Miss Wildon appropriately in writing, as they often to meet a meeting with the council to discuss any matters in further detail, so that's appropriate, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Vining.
I agree with Council Martin.
Thank you. Any further comment on the table? Council Martin, consider it closed, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against, Karen Inansley, thank you. Three point two point two is questions unnoticed from the public. If I could have a move of the regulation that is there.
So, ma'am.
Council Murphy, thank you, and seconded.
Seconded.
Council Austin, thank you. Council Murphy?
Yeah, again, be in the procedure, ma'am.
Thank you, Council Austin.
Thirdly.
Thank you, any further comment? All good, Council Murphy, close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Against, Karen Inansley, thank you. Three point two point three is questions without notice from the public. We have some lovely people in their gallery tonight, thank you very much. Hello.
Hello.
Mr Jenny?
Thank you, Mayor Jarmun, my name's Douglas Jenny, twenty-three Watson Street, Denbort. Beginning of the meeting, this is a comment, now it's next question. Beginning of the meeting, you, there's a welcome to country for the Aboriginals, but there's nothing for the people who founded and live in Denbort, why not?
I've never been asked before. You suggest something to me, I'll consider it. It's got to be endorsed by council, and I'm happy for you to suggest something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Right, next question to. Recently, I visited the information centre in Sheffield. On the wall were photographs of Gustav and Kate Bynne, your father. A person I was talking to, she said that early next year that the remains of Kate would be exhumed from a cow grave at the Don Congregational Cemetery and taken to Woldheim and her remains placed next to Gustav's. Right, so the question is, is your council aware of this, being the operator of the cemetery?
Obviously not aware of it, but I'm not sure what it refers to the general manager.
Through you, ma'am, I believe we are aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Jenny. Any questions else from the public gallery, please?
Hi. Hello, I'm Theresa Burgess from East Denbort, I've got a question to ask or a couple of questions there about, is there a specific protocol or process in place with the council to address properties that have become an eyesore and a potential hazard due to squatting or illegal activities, considering the concerns aroused by residents about safety and the importance in impact on the city's image?
Thank you for your question. I'll pass that on to the General Manager.
Answer you, thank you.
Yes, through you, ma'am. Council does have some powers to be able to require property owners to make their property safe or address fire hazards and so on, so it depends on the city's circumstances. We do work closely with Tas Police with squatting and other issues such as that, being a lizem and so on, so we're in a good working relationship with Tas Police. Council also has a dilapidated buildings policy. However, it's worth noting that we do need to operate, we all can operate within the powers that the council have under legislation. At times, that is can be somewhat restrictive.
Right, okay, yeah, well, as we've seen, there's a few buildings in Denbort and East Denbort where I live that have become underneath that banner of doing something about it, but nothing has been done about it for several years. It's just getting worse and worse. There's been comments on Facebook that I've noticed, that's why I'm here with a friend to make it aware for maybe some more people might come along, but I don't think they have, to do something about it or to make it, change legislation about it, to do something more, because they say bring in the living city, new buildings, and then we've still got those buildings in and around town that are a bit of an eyesore.
Was it the Denbort Facebook page that you put on?
Yes.
Yeah, article comments on there, did you see that?
I did see that, yes, there was over two hundred.
So we're certainly aware of those comments, it's not.
Audience on there.
Yeah, understand.
So that's why I'm here, to speak for those people who feel they can come along and say anything and find out a bit better answer than what we're just getting through Facebook.
Oh, absolutely, this is great forum for you to do so, true. Things can't be changed unless people bring them up and talk to us about it, that's right.
Depending on what it is, so I would appreciate that.
Would you like us to send something back to you, but be more official in writing, or are you happy with our answer to not?
No, I'd like something official, thank you, because it might have to continue on.
Thank you very much. Thank you, appreciate it. Any further questions from the gallery tonight? All good, thank you very much, appreciate that. Item three point three is questions unnoticed from councillors, if you want to go back to the note. Three point four, we're moving on to notice of motion, three point four point one. Notice of motion.
Seconded.
Thank you, Council Martin.
Seconded.
And Council Murphy, thank you, Council Martin.
Thank you, ma'am. The straightforward motion has been put to instigate a priority process and in with our neighbouring councils to explore all the opportunities to joint ownership of Denbort Airport and in realising its full potential. Denbort Airport is a crucial piece of infrastructure crucial for our region. It has huge potential to lift the profile of our region, grow our region's reputation and highlight our region's uniqueness. Plus, it would encourage direct visitation or repeat visitation, stimulate our local economy, and it truly deserves the importance of having a determined focus on how to realise its full potential, including the opportunities around ownership. As mentioned in background notes, it's estimated that four hundred to four hundred and fifty thousand people per annum travel from the north west region to Launceston for cheap air flights. Airlines market Launceston as a northern gateway entry due to the low cost fares. Wouldn't that be great, having it out of Denbort Airport? The cost of inbound access by air and sea compared to Launceston and Hobart is also identified as a weakness for our region in West by North West Regional Tourism Strategy two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-five. But Tasports are the current owners of the Denbort Airport. They far could mention the Denbort Airport in a Tasports two thousand and forty-three strategic plan, a thirty-year plan to guide statewide port development for the benefit of the industry. Tasports' priority is ports. Right now, they are focused on delivering key link, Hobart's redevelopment, and also what is happening with Bell Bay in the terms of hydrogen. It is evident through this strategic plan, they lack the interest in the airport and have done for many years, even though planned in two thousand and ten that they would work with local councils and airport users to develop the airport. The current actions recently at the Denbort Airport, the huge increase increases on the general aviation hangar and Aeropark building is a case of how they only focus on revenue and not on community services. This seems to be a theme with all tenants at the airport. Quite frankly, if it wasn't for the former general manager who just recently resigned, Dave Race, we would not have REX, Taspass Airbreak or Formabill, who provides the weekly pet services between Denbort and Launceston Airport. A list of the benefits for our four local councils having a direct say in the Denbort Airport includes the ability to have direct connections with the airlines without having to go through state government tourism department and their preference to see all flights through Hobart or Launceston. The ability to negotiate with airlines directly and provide incentives for any new entrance or new routes being developed with existing airlines. Airport revenue goes into local ownership and not Tasports' consolidated revenue and which is spent across all port developments and maintenance or dividends to the state government. By attracting more airline service to Denbort, more people will stay longer in the region. They'll have the ability to access to additional land for commercial light industrial development. They'll have the ability to offer commercial light industrial land with incentive terms to attract new businesses to the area. The planning and building control are under local government, therefore it's easier for a whole of council planning and development approach rather than deal with a state government owned business who prioritises its port and has a large debt to recoup. With the East Denbort Key Link project, they're also developing Hobart and Bell Bay ports. They have the ability to control what developments are undertaken at the airport as well. Denbort Airport is the closest airport to Crater Mountain, which attracts numerous people who choose to fly to our state and currently access this iconic area by Launceston Airport. Why? Because airlines promote it that way. Additionally, the potential includes the ability to become a larger player in the tourism market with more tourism entering the region by increased flights. Currently, the majority of passengers using Denbort Airport are business travellers. They have the opportunity to develop airbreak, an airbreak centre with direct exports to the international markets by Welkamp Airport in Toowoomba. Toowoomba has currently five to six international traders bringing in eBay and Amazon products and export Australian produce, seafood, meat, vegetables, milk, et cetera, into the Asian and Middle East markets. Why Toowoomba? Because Brisbane and Sydney airports are expensive to land and Sydney has huge delays for international cargo flights. Still, an opportunity to develop an international standard flight training facility. These facilities inject large economic benefits into the local economy with a great mod- multiplier effect. Denbort Airport is the only airport in Tasmania that meets Civil Aviation Safety Authority compliance, CASA, and has the opportunity to position itself as an alternative airport to Hobart for international flights. Currently, Melville is the alternative airport. The potential to partner with other regional airports, for example Sunshine Coast, to provide point-to-point services rather than going through a capital city hub. Why should four councils look at it? The greater reach of the Denbort Airport area encompasses the four local government areas with all key stakeholders in the airport either directly or indirectly. While the airport resides in the trove by all key assets, all services in the region, it serves the greater community. We have an opportunity as a group to explore what a funding ownership model might look like so that a presentation to the state government could be made to ensure that the best interest of the community in our region is looked after and allow the airport to grow and expand and to support our great region in tourism and airbreak. All options should be looked at, including the opportunity to seek private investment. Right now is the key opportunity for all our four councils to work collaboratively together to help shape the future of this great asset and potentially have a shareholding that will bring great benefits to our communities and region. Finally, it's to the officer's comments considering recommendations in the final report of the future of local government review and so on. The future of local government review is centred around reform, shared services and amalgamations. It is a hundred and ninety-six pages thick with thirty-seven recommendations to consider, none specifically about the Denbort Airport. Additionally, there are four councils' strategic plans, each projecting four to five strategic objectives, each with a range of seventy-seven to a hundred and twenty-four key strategies and action points listed below for actioning. Not forgetting Central Coast, Denbort, Chamber of Commerce and Industries, Mersey Valley Tourism Group and West by North West Strategy, and that's a lot to consider. The opportunity to form a working group to explore all opportunities for future ownership of the Denbort Airport and realising its full potential is far too important to be risky and getting lost amongst all those other considerations in a broader discussion. We already have waited and talked enough about the Denbort Airport. What we need now is a determined focus, please be encouraged to support this important opportunity.
Council Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am, it was quite a lot to take in. And congratulate Council Martin on the amount of work he actually has done. It has been a passion of his for some period of time. With respect to this, as it has to others around this table, currently sitting here now and who have sat here previously. I think two key points to take away from this are specifically the wording of the notice of motion where it is only called for a working group to be established. And, you know, to explore all opportunities for joint ownership of the Denbort Airport. What that looks like in respect to joint ownership, that would be a question that I would have envisaged that a working group would actually make a decision on. To bring it back to councils, the councils then to make decisions on behalf of their right parties. I suppose a good example of how this has worked historically is the Dalglish Waste Management Group. Look at the success that we've had with that particular joint working group and what that's achieved for our region from a waste management perspective. And to the stage where as a business enterprise, it actually now returns dividend to councils, which definitely see council benefits from a significant one. As I've stated, it has been raised previously with other councillors who have sat around this table and has been raised in candidates who now sit at this table with respect to needing to do something. I think our role as councillors, to make these types of decisions. I agree with what Council Martin has stated with respect to the officer's comments, that with the future of local government review, whilst it was disappointing, I totally agree that this probably does sit outside of any further conversations with respect to what anything else may look like into the future. I personally do not believe that establishing a working group to at least thrash this out now instead of kicking the can down the road to quote one of my mentors in local government, that we should support this and move forward, thank you.
Thank you, further comments? Council Shane?
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I'd like to commend Council Martin for putting up the motion and thank Council Murphy for his comments as well. I think along with Council Martin, we've been talking about the airport for a very long time, haven't we? I remember when I was president of the chamber, years and years and years ago, we were going to have a lunch to launch the master plan and funnily enough, it was delayed. Anyway, we got there and virtually, we had a look at it last year, but, you know, I just don't get the sense that Tasports' heart is in this master planning process and the reason that concerns me as councillor and someone who's interested in the economic development of the region is that, you know, not only are there sort of economic development opportunities from better flights going further afield to City of Brisbane, but the industrial land that sits within the airport, you know, there's just so much opportunity there. It could leak in with what Tasports are doing with logistics at the airport. I just don't think at the moment we should be sitting on that development and not doing anything with it. So, as I said, I very much am grateful to Council Martin for raising this. I think if it's not a wake-up call to Tasports that we are unhappy with the appalling, slow progress of the master plan, I don't know what would capture their attention. But as I rang Council Martin last week and just, we can just express a little bit of concern about him for wording, I'm not completely sold on the idea of council ownership of the airport. And I feel that the way that motion is worded, which is essentially, sorry, there was a says that council partner, Denbort council partner with other councils to explore joint ownership. I do worry that that might be construed by the man on the street as the councils having joint ownership. And I would hate from the outset for that concept to be locked in, because I think the PPP, private public partnership, or a array of other options might pop up as part of the review process. So, look, whichever way the motion goes, if it gets upgraded, if it doesn't, I do have an alternate motion within doubt, so I'll just quickly read it. That's all right?
No, I'm like that.
Okay, sorry.
But I'm only this motion at the moment.
Okay. Um, I'll run up at that point, thank you.
Thank you, further comments, please, Councilwoman Vining, sorry.
What's on your doors for previous speakers? Originally, the low-cost airports, airlines, on the trains that came to Denbort, Tasports would not, well, now exactly, Denbort, Marine Board of Control would not consider lowering their aiming fees. And it's quite obvious now that Launceston did, Launceston Airport did. So that's why all the people from here go to Launceston to get the change of airs. So the opportunity was lost many years ago and we have another go at it, thank you.
Council Moore?
Yeah, I'm happy to also lend support to Councilor Martin's motion. While I acknowledge it's a pretty complex time for all councils at the moment as we work through the final reports from local government review, I'm in support of focusing on this priority and I really hope that other councils are also interested in a true partnership with us to try and do this. I don't know what this model would look like, but I'm hoping that the motion is about a working group and that a working group, as Councilor Sheen has said, it doesn't mean that we're only looking at one model of ownership, but there's multiple models that I'm hoping the working group can come across.
Any further comment? Sorry, Councilwoman Vining.
No, thank you. I'm going to be supporting, I love the idea that, no, the four councils can possibly see a way to combine our resources to make something happen for our region. I think it's a really good thing and if that means expanding to private partnership as well, I'm open to that, but certainly the council should be consider this combining of resources to make something better happen with the airport that it currently is.
Council Martin?
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, Councilor Martin, for that well researched and considered notice of motion. We'll make note that we have discussed it even within this group when we put together our term plan earlier in the years. So it's really great for Councilor Martin to put this in the spotlight for us. I will note that it really does need that cooperation from the neighbouring LGAs that Councilor Martin has mentioned. I think that's a priority, that it is a cooperative working group. But as Councilor Martin also mentioned, it needs to be started, something has to start, this procedure, this idea, it has to get going and this could be the motion that starts the ball rolling, thank you.
I certainly have no issue with us talking about what can be done about our airport, because that's definitely been a conversation we've all been having for a long time about how it hasn't realised its full potential and it's certainly not working to capacity the way it may not have. We've had many meetings with different stakeholders. I think we've all been very disappointed with the different information that's been given to us from those stakeholders. And we have got our major concerns of something that, even in our prospectus, we say that with Denbort, living city, we have the spirits and we have the airport, what kind of airport can we have? So I certainly have no issue with that. I do have concerns about this tutorial, that the same. Right now, what we need to do is, no matter what, you three councils, come join Denbort in a working group and you've got to look at this. I hope that we can have some, I found it a little bit limiting in what it was saying. I hope that we can have some, yeah, I found it a little bit limiting in what it was saying. But I would think what would be interesting, it seems like most of our councillors are very encouraged by what is said in here. And I know the research that has been done and there's been a lot of getting involved, working with councillor Martin to give him all this information. But Dave Rice, people like that, who have been really great in giving you the information that you need. So I think it's going to be interesting to see how this is considered from the other councils. I know that I've spoken to the three others when you sent out the motion to them to have a look at it. It's going to be an interesting time. So I just hope that we can do this in a very careful, considered manner so that it's not dictatorial. We'll ask councillor Martin to close.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not quite sure where you get the dictatorial part on because the motion reads that councils look to partner with Kentish and Latrobe and Central Coast to form a working group to explore opportunities. That's not telling that they've got to come on board and they've got to do what we tell them to do. That's looking to partner. We're taking the first step with this motion and pulling out an olive branch out there and saying this is a very important piece of input structure that goes across our four new cities, directly and indirectly providing an economic impact. Especially when we've got 400,000 passengers driving past our front doors, going through Launceston and Hobart. So dictatorial, I think, is a very strong word. And I think you shouldn't be banishing that word around. The motion doesn't say that at all. Secondly, the working group, I would expect that it should be a combination of the representatives of those four councils. And that working group will involve what they want to look at. It will explore all opportunities and it may well expose the opportunity for private public partnerships with it as well. But to get the four councils involved at the start, to have a look at the possibilities, I think is a great start. And the working group itself will involve the opportunity and provide information back to council on how we can realise full potential of this airport for our region. Thank you. Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? That's all right? So we have a sharp hands. Councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis?
It's all?
Four, sorry, thank you. Councillor Murphy, councillor Ennis, councillor Holster, councillor Riley, councillor Moore, councillor John. Against councillor Shane. Harry, unanimously. Thank you. It's so good. Moving on to item four, planning measures. So 4.1. Oh, sorry. I'm trying to say the word and I don't even know to use it.
Mary.
Harry, thank you. Item four, planning authority measures, 4.1. So we'll have councillor Murray here. Thank you. Ten sand with place in Devonport residential units, the recommendation is there if I can have a vote.
So moved.
Councillor Holster, thank you. And councillor Martin, thank you. Councillor Holster.
This is just a further development. Stay at a good place. It's good to see this development being filled in. We seem to be having to buy a few more around the town at the moment, which is very good for that housing.
Excuse me, councillor Holster. I'm learning the word now because I can't use the word unanimously. I just need to announce that we're going into planning authority. Close be. I've moved on to 4.1. We're announcing that council intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approval Act 93 for the consideration of agenda items 4.1, 4.2, 4.3 and 4.4.
So this is a further development at various Devonport. It's on the outskirts of town, very much so. We're having a lot of other planning applications coming through all over town, which is very good. So quite happy to recommend the recommendation.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just mention that there was one representation for this development concerned with the provision for car parking on site. I will note that each of the three units has provisions for two car parks within the site and that there is sufficient room for on-street parking in that area. So that was covered off in the plans report. So happy to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Thank you, Mayor.
Councillor Martin? Hello, councillor Murchinsky. Apologies. That's all right. We're on 4.1. Just a few more of the motion. Councillor Martin, sorry.
Thank you. So the representation, as councillor Martin points out, was about the parking in the interior and on-street parking. There's sufficient on-street parking, which is about 65 metres, which is equivalent to 10 or 11 parking spots. Knowing the head of the Colerystack does not provide any. So there is sufficient parking there that should address the representative's concern. There's an idea of a 2.7 metre high instead of a 2.4 height requirement. An increase of 0.3 metres. It shows in the report, there's no air of shattering that would be detrimental to neighbouring properties. And the same applies to the variation of setbacks. So I'm supportive of the motion.
Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Murchinsky, did you want to comment on 4.1 at all? I know you're getting maybe even getting more. Yes, sorry. I just didn't want you to miss the opportunity to give it a go. Just, I, okay, it's all good. Yes, thank you. Councillor Holster to close, please.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Harry unanimously, thank you. Well allowed. Councillor Murphy to return as we overcome to 4.2. Thanks councillor Murphy. 29 Fenton Way, general hotel, higher food services, residential, recommendations there if I can have a vote, please. So moved. Councillor Moore, thank you. And a second one? Second. Councillor Shane, thank you. Councillor Moore?
Thank you, Mayor. 29 Fenton Way is an exciting development in our CBD. A mixture of accommodation, which will be for both permanent and visitor accommodation above the retail and higher premises. I just think this is great for the city. Bicycle sales across Australia are over a million a year. Why would we not want to support this development where people can come and hire, purchase bikes? It goes hand in hand with our North West Coastal Pathway and our various local mountain bike trails. I do note there is one representation about the actual lands that this will take up. And I do understand the representation in terms of the parkway and we don't have a lot of green pathway within the CBD. But I was happy with the officer's comments and I fully support this motion.
Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Yes, I'd like to congratulate the applicant for the quality of development. They've hired a great architect. It's a really unique concept still for Devonport. But to get one of those sort of big box bike shops that they have in Launceston and Hobart, I think it'll just see that sport go to the next level. I know a number of teenagers anxious they're waiting it. So well done. I do understand the concerns regarding the trees. Hopefully, next year sometime, council might sort of look at a CBD granting strategy, as Launceston has done to sort of lower the concerns when we have, well, there's inevitably going to be more development, we're chopping down trees, can we sort of have an overarching strategy where we're sort of we're netting out so that there's not too much loss. So, thank you very much and
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Murphy?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I'll follow on from the previous speakers. This is an exciting development. It is the continuation of the Living City strategy. Interestingly enough, I probably have a difference of opinion with councillor Shane with respect to the representation. When we look at where we currently, council has done with Haynes Park, you know, we demolished, we demolished two buildings and planted trees. So it's a ying and yang. So I'm really looking forward to this, as stated by councillor Shane, a very, very smart design. It's starting, hopefully it'll be the catalyst to more higher density, sort of multi-storey residential living within our CBD. There are significant opportunities out there and hopefully this will actually demonstrate to developers that there are significant opportunities here. And because I think what will be put on offer will be something that will be undertaken very quickly. But it's perfect with respect to locality. It's addressed all performance criteria and I'm very excited to see this moving forward.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, I think this is ideal. It's a high-profile location, which will only address my interest in cycling and the use of the bike tracks around the whole area. This will be, you know, the first spot where people get off the Spirit, come over here and get set up, do whatever they have to do with their bikes before they head off and start using the shared pathway and other bike tracks around the place. So I think it's just going to be really good. And I'm sure when we get all our good signage directing people around, it will be fantastic. So looking forward to supporting.
Thank you. Councillor Murchinsky? Just later on.
Yes, I'd like to support it as well. I think it's great, the idea, the living health, health, healthfully, sorry, with our bike tracks around us in our regional area. The green space, I must admit, we have got extra green space with our Haynes Park and whatever. It is a beautiful tree that's going to come down. But I think for accommodation, retail and tourism, bike tours, shared pathway, it's all a plus. So I definitely will be agreeing with it and congratulate the people who are put it forward.
Thank you. Councillor Holster?
Yes, I support this as well. I think this is probably the first development on this site that's probably going to have half a dozen new businesses in the future. This is a start and it's a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Yep, thank you. I'll be supporting the motion, thank you. It is an extension of Living City and the plan has been entered for a while. I do note the representation, but as councillor Murphy has pointed out, we have Haynes Park. We still have Stewart Street lined with trees and local vegetation. And there's landscaping around the city in regards to our CBD area. In regards to planning issues, noted that decking for apartment 147 is deemed insufficient and does not meet the requirements of performance criteria, but has been identified for a better use as for visitor accommodation and has been highlighted to do that. The storage for apartments 47 is also deemed inefficient again, but it has a better use and can meet the criteria it was used as visitor accommodation. And I note there's a condition will be placed on unit 103 to provide storage. The signage is not illuminated. If required illumination and new planning application would be required. And therefore the signage fits within the compatible area around it. The parking, that's going to be responsible to provide for unit parking. The bicycle parking, the cycle device to actually then required, eight instead of six, so that certainly meets the criteria. And the lighting must be provided with a car park. A condition is placed on the permit to ensure compliance. And the visual impact, a condition will also be put on the permit for appropriate landscaping, which addresses also the representation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Question, Mayor?
Yes. Councillor Martin?
Just, it's just coming in. Does councillor policy for a tree as significant that this is removed, that we potentially plant a life, a life tree in another location?
Yes. It's not a policy as such. We can always look into things like that. I know that we have trees in front of the old council building, had a little device that had a date in progress to move, for example. So there are different ways of working out this for certain where different ways of looking at things. But no policy as such. Thank you.
Further comments?
No. I'm certainly very pleased with those developers and what they're wanting to achieve here. Fortunately, sometimes to gain, we sometimes have to lose things. It can be very confronting at times. And we want to improve and do things and grow and it can happen in this way. However, this is a wonderful development and I'm really excited to see, you know, this is what we've been encouraged to have come to Devonport. I can't wait to see what's next. So I'm very, very pleased that it's going to be looked at and I'd like to see the finished product. It will be pretty impressive. So if we could ask councillor Moore?
Consider it closed, Mayor? Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Harry unanimously, I said a lot of this. I'm 4.3. We are three councillors, ladies and gentlemen, we still got a call. Don't pardon, thank you. Just a go. So 4.3, 84 to 86, Peel Chris Road and 65 Miles Drive. The recommendation is there if I can have a vote, please.
So moved.
Councillor Holster, thank you. And a second one, please?
Second.
Councillor Holster, to comment?
Yes, this is another infill in the middle of a block, which is good. Quite a few units that we've brought up and which certainly need housing around Devonport, so this can only help. So I fully support the recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Moore?
Yeah, just to reiterate, councillor Holster, the housing crisis in Tasmania and the affordable rental is just terrible. So 34 new units in Devonport will be fantastic. I would just note that there was two representations and it would be nice if the developer would look at those representations and see what they can do in term of fencing and keeping the nearby residents as least disturbed as possible. Unfortunately for the planning scheme, that actually falls out of our purview in this instance.
Well noted. Thank you. Any further comment? Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it's a stage development, 34 units, various two to three bedrooms. Planning issues, setbacks, only one unit does not meet a requirement, which is unit 13, which has a 7.2 metre wall located 0.8 metres from the side of the boundary. It's considered acceptable overall within the meeting criteria. One privacy, private condition, we've placed on a permit for screening of windows or alternative window solutions to avoid vehicle light intrusions. I note, general manager on there, it says it is presumed that the windows will be double glazed. Is that still a presumption or is that partial of that absolute developer?
Through to us, if that's all right. Councillor Martin?
Through you, Madam Ben. Thanks for your question. Councillor Martin, certainly typical building practice, most dwellings these days that double flies windows.
Thank you. As to waste storage, nobody areas provide for private collection and that council has placed a condition on permit. Should private waste collection not be feasible, council waste collection services are not guaranteed. Finally, the car park layout, a condition is placed on permit for car parking to be marked for unit allocation. So it's easy to be identified. And finally, I agree with councillor Moore in regards to the fencing. Perhaps the ideal of the developer would consider with his neighbours on backs, raising the mic. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment from the councillors?
Um, yeah, I think this is great. I remember walking through that land a long time ago, actually. I think it was a great area that could be developed. And to certainly come to fruition now for all those units, it's quite, certainly a great spot for it.
Councillor Holst, aye?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour? Against? Harry unanimously. We'll get our three qualified councillors to come back here. Thank you, his wife, yes. On it, okay? I'm not going to visit next, so.
It's camouflage.
Councillor Murphy is remaining outside for 4.4. 123, A River Road, Amerside, two lot subdivision. The recommendation is there if I can have a move please. Councillor Shane? And a second one?
Speaking.
Councillor Ennis? Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Thank you, ma'am. Could get another subdivision, a great sign of confidence in the city over the other side of the river. I note there was a representation regarding concerns of the boundary, the boundary line, and hopefully that will be addressed from here forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
No? Nothing further to add?
Thank you. Any further comment from the town? Councillor Martin?
Thank you, ma'am. Just in the planning issues, the frontage has been raised as a domestic criteria, but the combined total of 12 metres does meet the criteria. Instead of, as also share a reciprocal right of access, it's deemed to meet because there was 12 metres that's sort of high there and combined total was 13 metres. So that's acceptable. Just a question here in regards to acceptable solution A3, current access. Can be supported with some upgrades. Presume this is covered in permit condition three with reconstruct a minimum 5.5 metre reinforced concrete crossover. I presume I go to use to bound it through the GM?
Yes. Still?
Through, madam, ma'am, certainly the intention of condition is for the crossover to be upgraded.
Okay, thank you. Just sort of clarification on that. And I note the representation regarding this can be any kind of fence and the office comments. The site needs to be surveyed and of course, when the survey, they'll outline the areas of each site. And then we have to let owners to decide and agree on the way forward for regenting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? No? Do we still call it the rapid proof fence policy between changes? It's amazing that all. Yeah. Thank you. I'll ask councillor Shane. Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Harry unanimously. Thank you. We're moving on to item five, the reports. We'll just wait for councillor Murphy to return to the page. And we've got 5.1, which would be the sport rec facilities hire policy. Get all that information sent to us there, if I could have a move please.
So moved?
Councillor Martin, thank you. And a second one, please?
Speaking.
Councillor Holst, thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, ma'am. No problem with this recommendation in the report. I believe it brings it in line, makes it more clear and transparent with the hiring policy. I don't think any particular user groups would be financially put out by the changes and happy to support the recommendations.
Thank you. Councillor Holst?
Yes, this is a review of a policy which we've had for many years. I don't disagree with any, so I support the recommendation.
Thank you. Further comment from the town? No? Councillor Martin?
Consider it closed. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Yes. Harry unanimously. Thank you. Item 5.2, the safeguarding children and young people policy. We have some information there, the recommendation is there, if I can have a move please.
Aye.
Councillor Holst, consider it closed?
Second.
Councillor Shane?
Thank you.
Councillor Holst?
This is just a renewing of the policy. It's all in the report. Nothing further to add?
Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, it's in the report. Nothing further to add?
Okay. Further comment from the town? Councillor Murphy?
Uh, thank you, ma'am. This is probably a fairly significant policy that will be brought into immediate effect. It has been a recommendation with respect to safeguarding children. It's extremely important as we move forward as a community. As it stated here in 2012, the Child New Safe Organisation Act was passed by the State Parliament. Legislation includes requirements for councils to regulate entities and fulfil their responsibilities. So there is going to be some challenges there for a number of organisations that are actually operating within our community to meet these requirements, especially the ones that are supported by council. So it is going to be something that a lot of organisations are going to have to get their head around, specifically with what the impact will have on those organisations. There was a number of recommendations from the Royal Commission, as stated in the report. And it is worth noting, I suspect councillor Martin will speak to a number of these, I imagine. But it is something that we need to support with local living because as has demonstrated, the local government is always best placed to deal with these things and local government is also best placed to protect the most vulnerable in our community. So my report's there, I commit that for our support.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, ma'am. I'll revert back to the motion that was passed in council in regards to this issue. And in that, the alternative motion was moved. And that was basically to make sure that something was initiated by the policy council. Motion read to lead and to be responsive to the government call. Whilst I will be supporting this motion as a way ahead, it seems to be a cookie-cut version policy of the state government's version and not leading or being responsive. Even though it will be put into effect immediately, I would be very much happy if the council become a little bit more proactive in this area to explore and expand on what we're made to do by legislation. There are opportunities out there as to outline the initial motion that was put to council. For an example, I note on the policy that the contract managers and council staff need to obtain and maintain a working with vulnerable people check. But it does not mention elected members. So I query that and ask why not? Because councillors around the community, we're at different events and different sessions, including recently the end of year presentations at local primary schools, et cetera. So I think that the policy should look at including that the elected members also obtain and maintain a working with vulnerable people check. And hopefully that the council see that's the way forward, being proactive. And that's an example how we can be expansive on this issue and should be expansive on this issue and take up every opportunity to make it clear in the community that we're supportive of keeping our children safe. And that's the most important thing. We should be doing everything we can and not be minimalistic with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? I'm, I'm, sorry, I've got your, sorry, I've got your lot, so I'll cast the one. So, councillor Ennis, so?
Thank you. I think it's really important that, you know, obviously, obviously, keeping children safe is important and it's a priority for many of us. Lots of organisations let us down and let children down in the past, as the Royal Commission has shown. And it's continuing to happen today. So I think if we can show some leadership and particularly in education and raising awareness a bit above and beyond of what we can do, I think the community will be more than happy and supportive of that if we put some resources and continue our education and awareness of keeping children safe. So I'm probably supporting.
Thank you. Councillor Wilczynski?
Um, thank you, ma'am. Definitely we have to be out there safeguarding our children. I think supporting with councillor Ennis is allowing like sporting clubs, the education side of things, giving templates or what's needed for a sporting club to be official. So that, because youth starts in a sporting club all the time. So I think definitely we need to probably facilitate a little bit more with safeguarding our children. This is a great start. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martin, do you have a question?
I do, thank you, ma'am. Just going back to that work with vulnerable people. It says contract managers and council staff. Sorry, I missed a question. Does that include the GM managers and team leaders?
Not in that.
It's through you, madam, ma'am. The policy refers to contractors working for council. They'll need to, where appropriate, have written checks and people working with vulnerable people cards listed. That's not to say that it's not excluded from those other categories. And that's something that that next level of detail is what council will need to develop and put in place down in full. We've been, we believe, the staff that it's more appropriate to have consistent documents across the state. And that's why we've been hesitant to put our own steps in place outside of the process that gap that we're getting on behalf of all the councilors because we support the principle of consistency. Because it's important that it should be dealt with the same in the upper area. So absolutely, there will be requirements around working with vulnerable people cards. And that will be specified into the, I guess, the next level of details. We do risk assessment and stuff. But yeah, a whole range of other things we need to work through and we want to do that in a way that's consistent with others.
So with respect, then, we're not leaving and being responsive.
We see, through, we see the value in being consistent and we'll be putting those steps in place as soon as, as we possibly can.
I will point out, if that's all right, I think not just once, but twice as a council, a Devonport council level, councillor Martin, we did actually put up that we thought that working with vulnerable was most important for elected members. I put a term again and it wasn't successful. And we weren't the only council to do so. I think we've done it twice now, because I've done it at least once. So we certainly as a council have always said that we do believe in that. But it's got to go into the act following your run at the time for candidates. And it wasn't successful with the 29 councillors voting, which was very disappointing. So we certainly have led the way in thinking that that's something that should be brought in. It's a bit difficult because it's not at that level. You have a question?
I do. I don't see any reason why we can't as a council, we'd request that all our councillors have a work with vulnerable people, seeing that they're out there in the community, working with vulnerable people and children, with all their duties. And it can be leading to do so and responsive to do so.
Thank you. Any further comments? Councillor Holst, aye?
This council actually has a policy with new family and community connections. They're paid by the federal and state governments to fund the cross-situs in Moncesson, Devonport and Burnie. Without reach, down the west coast and out to Keane. So that partnership requires a lot of legislation that be followed from all those funding agreements. So I think, um, this is a step in the right direction for further development.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll move to the vote. All those in favour?
Aye. Aye.
Against? Harry unanimously. Thank you very much. 5.3?
Aye.
Ah, no. Dalferton Regional Waste Management Authority Rules. Councillor Murphy has noted, if I can have a second of this? Councillor Wilczynski, thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh, thanks, ma'am. Just merely a formality.
Thank you, councillor Wilczynski.
Anything to add? Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment? Or, councillor Murphy, take away?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Harry unanimously. Thank you. 5.4? Paper on skin partnership with RAVEN. Thank you.
So moved?
Councillor Shane? Councillor Murphy? So second, second. But a competition, ma'am, ma'am. Councillor Wilczynski, I think. Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh, thanks, ma'am. I, I think this is a, um, another step in the right direction of Devonport in its leadership in being a, you know, an arts cultural hub for the region. When this was originally presented to council some period of time ago, it was quite exciting and it's proven to be something of value to our community. What it's done, it's really opened up people's eyes with respect to what can actually be achieved with papering. But the level of involvement that it's actually having within our CBD and around our community is significant. We were very, very fortunate that, um, that our neighbouring council, not neighbouring, but they're down the road a little bit further, wasn't in a financial position to, to maintain this particular event, if you like, in their municipality, because I think they're poorer for it. And we seen the benefit of that investment. And I think now having a formal partnership agreement is a step in the right direction with relation to ensuring that we can maintain and keep paper on skin here in Devonport. Because it's, it's proving to be, not just from the facility perspective, but from the engagement and beginning from our community members, a significant and positive investment for that sort of arts and culture cohort in our community. So I commend it to our councillors and hope that they'll support it.
Thank you. Councillor Wilczynski?
Yes, I agree with, sorry, councillor Murphy. And what it does for Devonport and the youth to understand what you can actually achieve. It is, and it's originated as a national wearable competition. It, it puts us out there. It shows what's capable from youth to whatever age. And there's a lot of things we can do with the city and the back of this as well to generate more opportunities. So I think it's a positive step and I should definitely agree with that, my friend.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
I, I think this paper on skin event, uh, event is, it's quite unique. It's interesting and it's challenging for many people. And I think this partnership is really good because it gives some assurance to the organisers so that they can continue to press on and promote. And I know when we had a workshop on this, that there's been a lot more interest and not only nationally but internationally, and it's continuing to grow. So for us to have an event like this in our city, it's, it's pretty good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Holst?
Well, because as far as to say, this is probably the best art exhibition that I've seen.
Well, because as far as to say that this is probably the best art exhibition that I've seen in my time on council. And I think it's fantastic that we're going to, into a partnership with it. Um, and I think if our events play will, can come up with some other things to hang off it, it can only be very beneficial to this community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, I agree. This, um, partnership will be thirty months, would be great for a biannual event. It, uh, certainly raises, uh, the opportunity to further not only link with national other art organisations and creators, but internationally as well, as we are well aware of that, uh, it has done. But even more so now with this surety of Birmingham Board. Uh, I just also want to note that the, the history of paper of the north west coast, uh, where it's sort of been eventuated from, uh, by doing this type of, uh, art, uh, exhibition and event. It certainly hooks into, uh, the issue of Devonport and the north west coast. So we'll be supporting that for the uniqueness of used paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment?
Um, I'm looking forward to this partnership agreement with genre productions, Tasmanian, which is. Uh, I think that, uh, to say that we're all very proud to have that caliber of art, uh, event in our city. Uh, and for the region is just phenomenal. And I'd kind of like to see it growing more. So it started as a small event with a great idea and it just grew and it's now internationally renowned and it's, um, the last event that I've entered is just incredible. So I'd kind of like to see what next year will bring to us and looking forward to having it here. Thank you. Uh, if I could ask Councillor Murphy to close?
Consider it closed, then.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
And next, Carrie Van Annesley, thank you very much. Item, just wait for Councillor Shane to return. We're moving on to item five point five. Thanks, Councillor Shane. Um, the migrant withdrawal centre partnership of Raver to work on a move, have the recommendation actually there, please? Councillor Shane and Councillor Murphy? Thank you. Councillor Shane?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, it's a really long overdue initiative, um, and I think council folk are pulling it together. Um, I think as the city grows, we really do need to, um, focus on making sure that everyone's included, um, when they, when they move to Devonport. Um, Tasmania can be a really difficult place to move to when you're from interstate or, um, overseas, because we've all grown up together in terms of keep our friends. So, um, hopefully, um, it provides, um, support for, um, fam, international families moving to the city. I was a little bit vague on some of the tangible outputs for the funding, um, but I might, um, chat with, um, someone after me if we just get my head around that a little bit more. Thank you.
So, I don't know. Councillor Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Yes, um, it, it's not hard to notice that, um, the demographic of our community is changing. It's evolving, uh, as most of the northern half of the state is and, but more importantly, I, I suppose it's, um, again, it's something that local government does well. Um, and welcoming people and making them feel part of our community is extremely important. And having a, um, an entity who will take that level of responsibility on is also important. Um, I know within the partnership agreement, there is some KPIs that we'll need to look at annually. So obviously there's some, um, some, uh, some oversight there, uh, for council to actually participate in with respect to ensuring that we're actually meeting those outcomes as outlined in that agreement. So, um, yeah, again, it's commended for council for endorsement. Hopeful.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Thank you. Uh, I think on the, on the back of the wonderful International Cafe that's been operating in Devonport, uh, it's been fantastic. And I, I know that the migrant, uh, council has been working closely with the people at the International Cafe. And, uh, it is just fantastic, uh, that we have that in our city. And this is just adding a bit more strength and interest and support to the people that come here. I know the people that go to the International Cafe on the first Sunday of every month, uh, really enjoy it. And, and it is such a welcoming place for them to go. Uh, this will only add to it. So I'll be supporting.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Hollister?
Mr. Hollister, my name. Um, I know we get a lot of migrants here, but I know in the past that refugees are only going to Long Session, Haba. You know, that still happens? Or do we get refugees here as well now?
Oh, well, I'll have to get back to your, uh, it's Mr. Sterling wants to put his microphone on.
Yeah, through you, Mayor.
Thank you.
There have been some specific, um, programmes of, um,
It's not working. Hang on, you've got a new one. Flap your hands.
Through you, Mayor. There have been some specific, um, programmes of resettling, um, refugees in part, in specific parts of the state. Um, that hasn't involved the north west coast as far as I'm aware, and that's not part of a programme that migrant resource centre are proposing for Devonport. But we certainly know that there's, um, cohorts in our community, um, common, um, nationalities that do require supports that aren't currently available to them. So certainly our partnership with West North West Work has identified that there are migrants in their community who are seeking work. They're not able to provide them with some of the social support that, that they're looking for. And that this partnership agreement will help support that.
Thank you. Further comments?
Hi, um, I'd first of all, I'm, I'm so excited by this. Uh, yes, the International Cafe, Councillor Ennis, has been amazing. Um, and so welcoming and such a wonderful, uh, start to what we can do and how we can do it better. To have the resource centre now here, at least two days a week to start with, um, I hope that grows. Because, uh, to me, it, it ticks so many boxes. It's part of our living loss strategy, uh, which we're doing so well now and, and working on. Um, it makes us a more welcoming area for people to feel comfortable. I'll never forget personally as, uh, Air Force wife back in the day, um, route into a strange state from Tassie and not knowing anything, to meet an EAs officer and be told where to find the doctors, where the children can go to school, all the things I needed to know. And I spoke the language. Imagine if you don't then speak the language coming into a foreign country and how, how we really need that connection. Um, we are just getting better at this all the time. And I'm really proud that we've got this partnership agreement coming, hopefully to be yours tonight. Um, if I could ask Councillor Shane to talk a second?
Excellent. I really enjoyed hearing all the questions from the councillors. Uh, consider it closed.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Against? Carrie Van Annesley. So good. Five point six is the tender report for the Devonport Stadium, some consultants, if I could have a move of the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councillor Hollister in a second, please?
Second.
Councillor Ennis, sorry, Councillor Chinskey. Councillor Hollister. I have to start yelling it.
Yes, um, we've worked on this seven times. So I'm quite happy to go forward with the next step. That's what the recommendation is saying. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis?
Yeah, I think this, uh, this is just a continuation of, uh, what's going to be a potentially very exciting project for our city and our region. Uh, I think that, uh, the fact that the consultants that are recommending, uh, Tasmania, which is really good. And I'm very pleased that they're going to have the opportunity to take this project forward.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Chinskey?
Yes, I think, um, it's just the beginning or actually it's a bit further from the beginning. As Councillor Hollister said, we've had a couple of workshops and a lot of work's gone into this. And I agree that this is just going to be another great step for our city. Um, and it, it's great that we keep on moving forward with it. So, uh, so forth.
Thank you. Further comment? Councillor Hollister? Sorry, are you, I, I've got the same, it's okay, I'll be.
It's okay, Mayor. Thank you. Um, yes, look, it's part of the process that we have to go through. Um, I'm going to choose my words here. Um, the simple fact being that the design development, uh, of the proposed stadium is well expressed. At some point in time, it would be good that, uh, we present that to the community, uh, with respect to what that's actually going to look like. Um, and considering, I'm very much an advocate for ensuring that we don't present something that we're not going to deliver. Um, I, I think it's critical that unless we actually have this, um, it is going to be difficult for us to do that. Um, so I will acknowledge that that is important. We actually progressed this so far. I'm very cognizant of the fact that there's a significant amount of money, but we have the appropriate hold points put in place, um, to ensure that there is a level of protection there if we are unsuccessfully retaining the additional government funding or support, um, to see the project realised, uh, as in stage one and two. Um, having had the opportunity now to participate in a said workshop with respect to what the design looks like. Uh, it is exciting. There's no doubt about that. Uh, whether I agree with the location or not, um, is irrelevant with respect to the fact that, um, what's being proposed is a significant opportunity. Uh, there's no doubt about that. And I think the sooner that we can grab that opportunity and present that to the community, um, to get their feedback, I think they'll be just as excited. And that hopefully, um, that could be, um, the leader or the impetus for the state government to turn around and provide us with the additional financial support that we need to see it be realised.
Further comment?
Yes, Mayor?
Councillor Martin?
Thank you. I'm just going to echo what the other councillors have mentioned, just how excited I am about this project. Um, and again, I think Councillor Murphy pointed out that it is in two parts and that it's important that we have continuation of the project in its entirety. But there is a, a fallback position there, uh, with part one being just the four community courts. But the aspiration of this council is to aim for that part two, the development and the, um, you know, conclude, or not conclusion, but the construction of the, the show court as well, which will obviously require more funding. Um, I'd also think it's worth mentioning that there has been quite extensive community consultation with those key user groups, in particular the basketball and netball clubs. Um, and that comes on top of the work previously done with the sports infrastructure, master plan work. So there's a body of work of consultation there that gives us, um, or should give us full confidence to continue on with this project. And, um, I'll endorse those tenders. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Martin?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, it is a very exciting project, uh, being a broken down old basketballer. Um, certainly I think that Devonport has outgrown its facility, uh, a bit of a break centre. And to expand it, uh, is exciting not only for current use, but also for future use. The important thing about this, as it was with Living City, is that we gain social licence, uh, from our community in moving forward. And it's very important that we, uh, as soon as possible, get the, uh, these, uh, plans out to the public. So they can have their comment on us, uh, and, uh, add to it if possible. Uh, that social licence with Living City was very important moving forward. Uh, I know, uh, Councillor Vining's point in regards to the users have been consulted. And yes, there might be a bit biased in their opinion there to, yes, let's get one. Uh, the community at large also needs to make sure, uh, that they have the opportunity to contribute to the, uh, the project as well. Uh, and that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment? Uh, Councillor Shane, so I'm, who's, Councillor Martin? Councillor Hollister, please.
Excellent. Um, yeah, I'd just like to, um, uh, reiterate previous support for the, the project. Um, I know there's more community, um, stakeholder consultation to go, but, um, the plans to me look well, however magnificent. It's going to be an outstanding facility. And really just consolidate more of what we've been doing in the CBD with Living City. Um, so I, I can't wait for that, um, ready management process to be finished and the drawings to be, um, ready for a list of product. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comment?
Um, yeah, bring it on, I say. I can't wait to see the next stages that we're going to be working on. There's been a lot of work done already. And yes, uh, as soon as it's, uh, relevant and at its, uh, the right stage, it certainly will be, um, put out to the public for them to know what's going on and what's being designed. We've just got to make sure that it's, um, correct until our point. And I think we get into that stage, um, so that it, it will be out there. It's not a big secret that we're going to be having a new sports precinct. We've been talking about it for quite a long time. It's probably the next thing that we're going to be talking about for quite a while now. So I can't wait to see, um, us get to this stage and then get to the next stage and that next stage will be certainly letting people know what that design looks like and where it is. And how that all works for everybody, because it's involving everyone, including children, um, who are going to benefit from this wonderful precinct. So if I could ask Councillor Hollister to close?
I fully support this previous speakers. I think we all be proud of the Living City as to what we've done so far. And I believe that the, even though it's a sporting precinct, I think that development and the way it's coming forward, I think we'll be just as excited. So I'm very much forward to getting to that final stage. Thank you.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Against? Carrie Van Annesley, thank you. Five point seven is our financial management strategy for twenty four thirty three. Um, this is, uh, to be adopted. If I cancel the recommendations there, if I can remove the polls.
So moved.
Councillor Murphy? So, second was Councillor Chinskey. Thank you. Councillor Murphy?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, very good document. It actually highlights the council's strong financial position on, in a number of different, um, areas. Um, we too need to be cognizant of the fact that we will be in force potentially lean years in twenty seven, twenty eight. Um, and what impact at the moment we're riding the crest of the wave, but isn't all of these things. Sometimes things change, the economic climate outside of council's control is changing. However, council has been very diligent and very fiercely responsible over a reasonable period of time that has seen a number of things, uh, working out of advantage. Considering the position of some of our neighbours with respect to their net debt ratios, um, when you consider what the impact of that can potentially have on its rate payers, it's extremely important that, especially with the information that's been provided in the report, um, that that is actually considered. The other thing that's worth noting is, um, we will be, um, not necessarily retiring debt, um, managing debt, but one of the things with our asset renewal expenditure programme, um, we will not be committing as much over a number of years from the years that we've had. We have had some significant asset renewal over the past three years, um, but we will see, um, that drop off to a degree over the next however many years. Um, and we will have to be again cognizant of how we manage that moving forward. There are a number of other challenges that the council will be facing, uh, financially with respect to, um, EAs and the impact on those and what it does, uh, have on our bottom line. But for the next ten years, we've got a bit of a fairly clear plan and a goal which we need to achieve. Uh, and it will be a responsibility of the people sitting at this table, uh, to ensure that, um, as the next local government election rolls around, that we are leaving the, uh, the council in a better financial position than what we found it. Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Murphy. Councillor Chinskey?
Um, yes, I'd like to congratulate Joshua and the management team with putting this package together. It's brilliant. Uh, it's a lot of hard work. Uh, I agree that we've spent a bit of money over the time, but if you don't spend money, you don't do anything. Um, so our progression in our city has been worth spending the money and looking forward. And, uh, you know, under the guidance of, um, the finance manager and the teams, I think we're looking quite good. So thank you, Joshua and the management team. I agree with adopting the financial management strategy.
Thank you. Any further comments at the table?
Councillor Murphy himself based it on our council's independent audit committee. We have two very good financial advisers there. And I believe that the committee is quite happy with the situation of council. The audit, state government audit committee, they seem to be quite happy with their questions and samples that they asked at this meeting. So I think council can be quite satisfied that they're going in the right direction. Even with inflation bearing its own head, it won't.
Thank you. Any other questions, points? I think it's in a nutshell, there's a lot of reading for us to do, thanks very much, Josh. And, you know, I appreciate all the councillors doing what they've got to do. And I appreciate our two councillors that are on the audit committee as well. And I think in a nutshell, it just says here, the strategy 5.5.2. Ensure comprehensive financial planning and reporting to guarantee sustainability and meet or exceed financial targets. I think we're on the right track and I certainly have no issue if anyone wants to question us on how we're tracking. Because we're in a very good space at the moment, it's because of all the hard work on the staff. And the councillors doing work, they've got to do so. So I feel very comfortable with where we're at. If I could ask councillor Murphy to...
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to all fellow councillors who spoke to the recommendation. I would just like to stipulate that it is the responsibility of us sitting around the table to ensure that we provide the best outcomes that we can for our community. And sometimes tough decisions will have to be made. And whilst I agree with council, the opportunity, you've got to spend money to make money. Sometimes you have to be prudent and actually save some money and sometimes not spend some money. Because the only impact, that'll only impact our rate payers. Because ultimately, they are the ones that will bear the brunt of any of those decisions. So I think it's about being prudent. This document provides us the guidance to do that. But more importantly, I think the mayor hit the nail on the head with respect to the sustainability of council. If we looked at local government reform, one of the primary issues for a lot of local governments was their financial stability or sustainability. And this council has demonstrated its capacity to do that above and beyond with respect to meeting those, the KPIs set by the Tasmanian Order Office. And realistically demonstrating quite clearly our capacity to manage debt. So again, I commend the report for councillor Horst.
Thank you. Against? Carrie Denisley, thank you very much. Our section six is information, 6.1 is the workshops and briefing sessions held since the last council meeting, if I can have a move please.
So moved.
Councillor... More than councillor Vining. So councillor Moore.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I think the fact that we had two workshops in December shows that we're not slowing down even though we've got to the end of the year. I love the workshops personally. We learn so much and we really appreciate actually finding out about stuff and being able to ask the detail. Especially the stadium design workshop was hugely beneficial, so thank you.
Councillor Bond.
Thank you, Mayor, I'll agree with my fellow councillor there about the workshops and the benefit of having that additional one for this month. It's also worth noting that in the agenda, those conflicts are now listed as well for the public record, so that's good to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comment?
Question.
Councillor Horst.
And standing right through the market, people get on with the Tasmanian Plan and Commission, something to...
Through you, Ms Lawson.
Yeah, through you, Mayor, we had the hearing last week, or the remaining second part of the hearing here last week. That got wrapped up pretty quickly. But meanwhile, the commission have referred the additional information that the applicant provided to the citizen general to get legal advice as to whether they can, whether that additional information can be considered as part of this hearing or not. We are expecting it back in the new year. And then I guess one or two things will happen, they'll either not consider that information and they'll make a, probably provide some directions and make a decision on the application as it was referred by council to the commission. Or alternatively, they will provide some directions as to how they want to respond to the additional information. So they may very well refer it back to council to consider whether we want to support that alternative application or not. Yes, we'll just wait to hear from the commission now.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I do note that councillor Vining picked up on, it is pleasing to see that we're able to achieve a common sense resolution to the notice motion put up by councillor Martin with respect to dealing with conflicts of interest at workshops. Again, it goes to this council's willingness to be open and transparent. So it's there for all to see and I think we'll see a lot more of it, which I think is very pleasing.
Thank you. Further comments, questions, if not councillor Moore would chip forward.
Consider it closed.
Thank you, all eyes upon...
I moved. Mayor's been very busy, again, must be getting towards the end of the year and we're just trying to get everything finished.
Thank you.
Yes, my comment is, I just, amazing effort to do what you do, so keep up the work on behalf of the community, thank you.
With the mayor likely to provide us with an update with respect to these...
Yes, absolutely. We have a meeting, second meeting with the roundtable that was organised by Minister Galvain, the North Minister for the state. And we had the similar people in the room. We did have an extra person in the room was a doctor of interest who has expressed interest in seeing whether there is something that he can get involved with on that side of the river, which is great. We learnt a lot more going through from speaking to people like Sue Hostel out of our earth's office who explained to us a bit more about how there's some different models that are done, not just GP clinics and gave us a bit of information about that, which was very handy going forward. And we can be guaranteeing another meeting with Mayor's tonight because of Christmas going into January. So we're hoping probably third or fourth week of January. We're getting to that point where we're finding out what will be the short term, medium term and long term. Short term will be more about transport, we had someone speaking to us about transport. It was very exciting for that person, it was helpful, but from down south to say, you know, there are taxis, there are different entities that we've used, not knowing how many taxis we don't have up here. So it's simple for someone on paper to say, here's the solution. We then are able to provide a bit more information about that's not necessarily going to work up here. So they've got more work to go back to to find out a bit more for us about how that would work within the leading term as soon as this clinic closes on the 3rd of February. So really, that's the big thing we're working on straight away, no matter what. But that doesn't mean that that's going to be the permanent solution, it will work on a leading term and a long term as well.
And meeting with Dave Goff and Jennifer Houston regarding Tegara, average cultural centre in Keating Place.
Yes, so I found out where they're at, up there, so they are actually open for business, which is great. I met Jen Houston, which is lovely, she's now the new president of Six Rivers. And we were talking about what could be possible up there at the bluff, working with Six Rivers and whether there's a possibility of doing some, whether it's called improvements or some changes or some type of, what would we call it? New ideas up there. And the lovely thing is that they're willing to work with the council and were taking back that information to the Six Rivers. They met last Thursday, so I'll have to have a catch up soon.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A comment really, as we wrap our first four years councillors, I just wanted to express my thanks to you, Mayor. As a new councillor, a new local government, it's been a challenge to sort of keep up with everything and learn the ropes. But really appreciate the support you've provided to me, and I suspect the other newbies as well. It's much appreciated and we do appreciate everything you do. And congratulations on another busy, busy month.
Thank you. And so it goes back to all my councillors and councillor, my deputy, being able to fill in when I'm not able to go things because some things double up, or being able to ask other councillors to do in my place, it's been really much appreciated. Because you can't be every very good at once if there's two things all at the same time. So it is much appreciated, thank you.
Councillor Vining.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, I'll echo those sentiments, a particularly busy month and you've been a great support to us new councillors, thank you. My question's in relation to your meeting with Luke Edmonds, MLC, with the deputy mayor and the GM. How did that go? Was it...
Because the GM was busy at the time.
Yeah, he was, yeah, through you there. Luke was interested in the motion that councillor passed around being against housing. He just wanted to understand a little bit more around what we were thinking, what issues we might be putting in place and provide an update on that. He was also the showcase of local government, so we talked about some broader local government matters, a few local government reports. It's quite generous with his time, just to give more matters of interest around it.
Have we met with anyone in the city government about the exceptional notice of motion that deputy mayor put up about the housing dispute?
We did actually get a letter from... Through you, Mayor. We did actually get a letter from Mr Ferguson. Quite an extensive letter outlining what they're doing, where they're up to and offering to meet with council representatives at a time without choosing to go over a bit more.
That's Christmas, we're a bit too...
Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, questions, councillor Horst, it's closed, please.
It's very closed.
Thank you, all eyes upon... Thank you. 6.3 is the general manager's report, the recommendations here, if I can have a move please.
So moved.
And second place, please councillor Murphy, councillor Gilczynski. Thank you, councillor Murphy.
I'm pleased to say to Mayor, the GM has been as busy as normal.
Councillor Gilczynski.
Is keep up his hard work, well done.
Thank you. Further questions? Councillor Shane.
Continue the Christmas cheer. I really, really like those video updates. I don't think it's working, I just read.
Too many on, too many mics on, bless.
I'll take one off. So the very important comment I needed to make was, again, same sentiment as the mayor. Really appreciate those video updates that the general manager does. It's a fantastic way for us to stay across what's happening. I'm sure you've got better things to do during your day, but I really do appreciate the time you put into those and thank you very much.
Are you here? Anything here? Councillor, sorry, yes, you want to speak off?
Thank you. I just note that you attended the council life in Haynes Park, GM. And I was just wondered, has there been any local internal review about how it all went? As yet.
Through you, Mayor, I'll take that notice and come back to councillor Ennis. It was great to see that space activated to the extent that it was. It must have been, I didn't actually go along to see, obviously, to just walk around and see how it all was working. So I did, I was on my own, I had a chance to explore the layout from a lot of different angles. I'm sure I read stuff and I get a bit of spence on, we'll build it a degree from all that. So we are able to provide some feedback.
And as one of the core assistants, I'll walk from my seat anyway. I'm happy to provide feedback later on, at the appropriate time.
Thank you. Further comments, councillor Vining?
I was just going to say the next time you're alone, GM, if you can give me a hand with my toddlers, it would have been really appreciated.
Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mayor, just in regards to the letter to the Office of Local Government. Picking up on the personal interest returns paragraph, I suppose. In the last paragraph, it's been pedantic a little bit, but specific details of the PIP. I'm human, it's supposed to read the PI. There's a typo there, I mentioned that because you're allowed writing to the Office of Local Government.
Yes, they should fix it in time.
Thank you. Further comments, councillor Horst.
Yes, the general manager will meet with the local government managers, maybe get anywhere close to reforms. Especially in relation to the credit case that's already in the future.
At that meeting, there's a discussion around the reform. All the councillors will be considering that position in the early first few months of next year, those issues due earlier in February.
Thank you. Further comments, questions, no, councillor Murphy.
I can see the question.
Thank you. All eyes upon... Against? Carrie Denisley, thank you. 6.4 is the monthly operational report, recommendations here, if I can have a move please.
So moved.
And the second place. Councillor Martin, thank you, councillor Murphy.
Thank you, Mayor, as per normal, very detailed report, although I am struggling a little bit in with respect to the dashboard snippets, having to turn the computer up the other way. Mr Janey, I feel your pain. It's very difficult sometimes to sort of put your head around this way to get an understanding. But the information is extremely important, so it is the primary driver to actually going onto the website. Councillor's website having with the dashboard, just to get a more orientated view of what's actually being presented to us. Interestingly enough, the design concepts for the western portion of Fethon Way have been undertaken. So I'm looking forward to seeing how that comes back. Yeah, but again, very, very detailed report. It's a lot of information, it's a lot of relevant information. And, you know, it really does sort of give us a good snapshot of where we are.
Thank you. Councillor Mark.
Thank you, Mayor, congratulations this far for all the work they've put into providing support to it. It is very detailed and it's very much appreciated throughout the year, especially even now. Just a couple of things, probably a couple of things that are maybe pedantic and I do apologize. Usually I try and succeed before coming to a meeting, but I didn't have the time this time. Item 3.2.2, aiding stronger living well. In there, you've got trial and I think it should be trial, so just a bit of typo there. 3.2.6, you've got upcoming sporting events and listed underneath that is save our money, properly, head by session. And listed underneath that is save our money properly at the session. And Mayor's Christmas drinks on the boardwalk. Probably not a sporting event for the Mayor's Christmas drink on the boardwalk. Could be later, but I'm not at the start of it.
I don't know, we will do it.
So perhaps that should be looked at to put underneath a different heading. I note also five point five, this is a comment revenue is up 16%, which is part of the revenue. And yet we still have Easy Pay or Easy Park available to all our residents. So it would encourage people to use Easy Pay and miss out on paying fines. Finally, with the configurations of the report and twisting the computer around, I might provide a suggestion to councillor Murphy that yoga might be handy for you. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, councillor Holst.
Any applications? Knowing, say, our own corner, six odd subdivision, demolition, is that still heavy industrial? Assuming they're talking about the old apple.
Through you, Mayor, I believe you're correct. Yes. Councillor Moore.
Yeah, just two comments, actually one question, one comment. I know the parade is reported as an upcoming event, but the parade was amazing considering the torrential rain, the amount of people that once they were out, they just said, I'm out now, I'm going to get wet. It was a fantastic event. So I can't wait for next year when I'm sure it will be sunny. And I just had a question about the Facebook reach. Is that up by a huge amount, this report? It was a hundred and twenty thousand, three hundred and twenty eight.
Must be that dog, but you checked this. It took a while.
It feels like that's up by a lot. Okay, disturbed.
Nice important thought, asking the question.
Certainly, Mayor, but again clarified, certainly the dog reached rain had seventy thousand impressions. So that, an impression just means that people flipped past it at some point. But actually followed that up today and it was seventy thousand impressions that were received. It was about four and a half thousand people engaged in the comments, went through it. Seventy thousand people actually flipped past their eyes at some point.
Can I ask another question about that? So that's without any extra boosting or anything like that?
Correct, yeah, that was. It's shared within our networks.
We've been, I was worried about that too, I thought that's just way too much, but that's, I mean, true. We saw it ourselves. Thank you. For the comment, no?
Yes, Mayor, please.
Oh, sorry, councillor Hall.
That's all right. Just in reference to the graph on page one hundred and thirty four, which is the work order status completed monthly. I'm just trying to understand why November is fifty percent more than October and October is over a hundred percent more, or a hundred times more than any other month. Is that just an anomaly? Does everything happen in October and November?
Through you, Mayor. Happy to answer that.
Just getting to that part, yes, one thirty four.
So that's a new graph that we've put in place. So this is available on the website now, so it's the first time we've knocked this out. The months, all of those work orders were completed in November. And what that graph shows is when they were opened. So that's indicating that in the month of November, there was three hundred. Six hundred and thirty six orders that were opened and closed that month. However, there was, if you add all those up, so there's nine hundred, you know, over a thousand orders that were actually completed in November. Some started back in prior months, if you like.
It's just a.
So what it does, it gives an indication of how long those work orders are taking to be processed. So you can see the vast majority are raised in November and completed in November. Whereas some of the more difficult, complex ones, like the one that was opened in March, and it's taken to November to be completed.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
That's good.
Yeah, it gives an indication of when they were first raised. So all of them, yeah, they're all completed last month, but it shows you the time it's taken to complete.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. Just before I ask councillor Murphy to close, can I just pass on to all the staff for the twelve months, all the hard work that's involved, not only just these meetings, twelve with them, if not there's special meetings, all the work involved, all these reporting, the deadlines that they have to work with and by the time they get all the information to us. We are very well versed, we get a lot of information given to us, not just at this meeting level. We're talking about videos, online workshops, there's so much work involved. And we do appreciate every level and sector of staff, all the work they do for us. And we hope that they all have a lovely Christmas break. They do get to have, I'm sure we've got skeleton staff doing work after hours and over the public holidays and the times as well. We do hope that everybody has a nice, lovely Christmas and a safe and happy new year and enjoys any break that they do get. Most that don't, surely they'll get a nice break after that, I'm sure. So just to pass that on while we can. Councillor Murphy, to close, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Well said. It's your place.
All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? So carried unanimously, we're moving into our closed session if we can remove the reference to that.
So moved.
Again, point of order, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, what about it?
Just with relation to point six in the agenda.
Point six.
Committees, authorities and external organisations.
Well, now, I was looking at that, but it's not here, so I'm not sure why I missed it, sorry. So I've got six point four. Yeah, it's at the end of the operational.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
I can see why you're confused by that, because I looked at it very quickly and managed on it wasn't. But then I was doubting myself in the honesty, because it's on that last page. Yes.
So moved.
Thank you. So moved. And the second to close?
Second.
Thank you, councillor Murphy. Councillor Bond, thank you. Councillor Murphy.
Merely, merely the procedure, Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Bond.
Nothing to add. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any comment? Nori, councillor Murphy, to close.
Cheers, guys.
Thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
Against? Harry Dinnan, thank you for lying in the public that we're going to.